No.
My mic is live. Very well, we have six o'clock apple time?
Yes, sir.
Looks like it, huh? All right. Very well, we call this meeting to order, a regularly scheduled Alexander County Board of Education meeting today, Tuesday, November 12, 2024. And we'll start with Mr. Robinson leading us through a pledge of allegiance.
Please stand. Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next is the approval of the agenda. Have all board members had the opportunity to review the agenda? And if so, what is the pleasure of the board?
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion by Mr. Dagenhert, second by Bowman. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The agenda is approved. Next is honors and recognitions, and we will begin.
Chair Maguas, Vice Chair Reeves, members of the board. It's my honor this evening to present the three of our board members with distinguished honor and recognition that they've given to their service to our school district and families across Alexander County. We are saddened that three of you will be leaving our board. We celebrate the choices that you and your family have made. We know the sacrifices that you've given over the years to this, to the board, of your time, but most importantly, our students, faculty, and staff here at Alexander County Schools. All three of you bring something special and brought special things to this school system.
Sure.
Rami, one term, four years. Got three terms, 12 years of service. Regent, 16 years of service, four terms. There's so many lives that you've enhanced, that you've changed, that you've made better, and that it's not always easy. I don't think people recognize and realize that being a board member is a difficult job. You have to make hard decisions, thoughtful decisions. Ultimately, what you believe is best for the school system, this county, and these communities. Say thank you for everything that each of you have done, sacrificed for your family at your time, but you've given so many families opportunities, and there's so many success stories out there that you don't even know. Thank you for everything. I consider you colleagues, and more importantly, I continue to. Thank you very much. I'd like to call you up and give you an award. If you have family members or those who would like to come up with this, I'd love for them to come up and get a picture of them. First of all, I have a plaque here that says, "In appreciation to Rami Robinson, Alexander County Board of Education, 2020 through 2024, Chairman in 2023, for exemplary service, dedication, and loyalty to the children of Alexander County Schools." I'd like to send you this award. Thank you.
Come on, Michelle.
Can we photobomb this one?
Why not? Yes, you're going. You're going. I got families at the reception.
Next, Mr. Shatner, in appreciation, Alexander County Board of Education, 2012 through 2024, Chairman 2018, Vice Chair 2016, 2017, 2020, 22, for exemplary service, dedication, and loyalty.
Good job.
And finally, Regent Ryan, Alexander County Board of Education, 2008 through 2024, Chairman 2014, Chairman 2020, Vice Chair 2013 and 2009, for exemplary service, dedication, and loyalty to the children of Alexander County.
I don't know if this is a congratulations. Yeah, with plaques.
With plaques.
All right, swish together and move this way a little bit. All right, thank you so much. And thank you for your service. We still appreciate everything you do. You help get my... Thank you. One more smile, Reggie. You got it in you.
Good job. Good job. Good job, good job.
All right, I'm going to continue with our honors and recognitions. So we would like to ask Alexander Early College teacher Kristy Hall to come on up. Ms. Hall recently received an award from the University of North Carolina. Right, Rob?
Absolutely.
UNC Worldview is a group that honors teachers each year for the Carol Tressalini Award, and that's an effort to promote global education in communities across North Carolina. The recipient of the award gets a scholarship to attend future UNC Worldview Global Seminars, and the Tressalini Award not only acknowledges the hard work and dedication of individual educators, but also serves to inspire and encourage others in the field to embrace and promote global education in their own spheres of influence. So that's a state award, y'all, right here.
Who's taking a picture for Donita?
Congrats. Does that have that name on there? AJ Calhoun. I can get it. I'll give it to you. All right, all right, look him this way.
That was proselytism.
That was very good.
Congratulations.
Do you need my... Oh, Rami's gonna help me. Okay.
Well, welcome, and thank you for being here. Dana Binfield is not here. Okay, so Rami is gonna help me. He serves on our foundation board as a rep from the Board of Education. And I always read this because the mission of the Alexander County Public Education Foundation is to provide resources and support for the Alexander County schools, to develop students with broadened life skills and educators with an increased passion, thereby enhancing and enriching the future of the community. And we believe we do that by awarding teacher grants each year. We've been providing these since 2012, and at that time, we've set a limit of 10 grants, up to $500 each. We continue to set new records every year, and this is no exception, because this year we are awarding 28 grant submissions for a total of $13,076.68.
Great job.
Beating last year's number... Beating last year's number by seven grants and $2,700. I would like to say that we are able to do this because of our successful fundraisers. Our sports hall... We have two, our Sports Hall of Fame Golf Tournament and the Ceremony that will be coming up in November, and I'll tell you a little bit more about that in a little bit. I want to urge everyone in this room and all those touched by these grants to continue to support our efforts, and tell your friends, because we need your support so that we can continue to give this type of money out each year. And without our community's support, these grants are not possible. So thank you, and thank you to everyone that has participated. So if you'll sit back, I'm gonna go through every grant in detail, since it's my last meeting.
You better get a chair. Yeah, you better get a chair. Monty wishes he had a relive.
Actually, no, I'm not. We have so many that it would take all night, but we will highlight these submissions through our AC, Alexander County Schools webpage in the upcoming days. I will read the project name, the applicant's name or names, because there are some group projects and the school. So when I call your name, please come forward. Your check is attached to the back. If you are a group project and there's multiple names in the group, you'll get one check, so it'll be on the back of one of the certificates. Our first winner, the project is STEM Bends by Heather Wegant of Hidnite School. If you and anyone we could come forward, please. We have Free Standing Cabinet to Practice Life Skills by Hope Laird at Hidnite School. Frog Dissection Materials, Danielle Ortiz at Bethlehem. Pickleball Nets, Chris Marshall, ACHS. Weighted Medicine Balls and Jump Ropes, Cam Gant, ACHS. Sticker Making, Samantha Strathie, ACHS. Encore Adjustable Slides, Butch Carter, ACHS. Instruments, Paige Polite, Hidnite. Industry Tours Materials Incentives, this was a joint effort with Amanda Barnes and Emily Fox at ACHS. Generation Genius Subscription, Aslyn Barnes, Wittenberg. Cougar Connects Cooking, Amanda Marshall, ACHS. And I don't have the name of this one, I'm sorry, but Kelly Teese at East Alexander Middle School, and I think it was something with rocks. Rock Garden, thank you. Glow Games, Nikki Stevenson, Hidnite. Button Making Machine, Kat Sino, ACHS. Puzzles, Mats, and Sorting Trays, Michelle Robinson, West Alexander Middle School. This is a joint effort with Kim Brown, Melissa Cantor, and Liz Cronin to a trip for the Charlotte Motor Speedway for AIG students. Soil Kits, Mining Materials, Lab Supplies, Paige Jackson, ACHS. Whiteboard, Stray Race Markers, Zachary Richardson, Wittenberg. A Joint Grant to Mary Brown and Dr. Donita Dalrevis for Morehead Planetarium Field Trip for AIG Students. Ceramic Materials, Joseph Cornwell, ACHS. Fishing Shirts for Competition, Tyler Mitchell, ACHS. Book Publishing, Ashley Huss, West Alexander Middle School. Purge Just the Bill of Obligations, Ashley Bumgonner, Alexander Early College. Sports Equipment, Mary Brown, Alexander Early College. Okay, sorry. And Display Boards, Mandy Reed, West Alexander Middle School.
Great job, guys.
And on behalf of the foundation, I want to congratulate you all, and thank you for what you do for students in your classrooms and in your schools.
Great job.
Thank you.
Great job.
You got a photo? I'm gonna do a video. She's gonna get a video of everybody, so she can do it like when you're...
They would never know it was me. I'm gonna put a...
Rabbit ears, cut here.
It's your last one. What you got to do? What are they gonna do, five? There you go, rock on.
That's true.
That's what we told you.
What's the new firm?
What are they gonna do? It's his last one. What are they gonna do to him? I can't even arrest him for it.
Everybody, where's my high school? Step over here. All high school people, both high schools, stay here.
They're desperate for Buster. I can still do that, too.
Are you for that? Those are desperate.
Yeah, sure. Two of us. Yeah, also, so that I can make sure that I have everybody's names, I am gonna do a quick... Well, I have to have you nice.
Okay, Scott, here's your chance. Here's my chance.
I'm gonna do a quick video down here. Everybody just pull up your certificate, so I can just see your names.
He could hold me up. He could hold me every...
Hold me up. Him and Ashley, for sure.
Or stand up and look at the plaque right there.
I knew something was...
Okay, now, got your names, and now, we're probably gonna have you come forward to overhear some of them in between these two gentlemen. Yeah? He's gonna work it. Now, hold up your certificates like here. There you go. That looks good. All right, everybody's smile.
She's gonna take three, so you got your chance, Scott, and it's one.
Hold on. Yeah, just push the button now.
Hey, tell her.
Help her, Lord.
That work meeting, they sort of say time, don't they? Camera operations.
Your turn. Oh, three, one, two. All right. Everybody just got money, free money. So what do you look like when you get free money?
Miss Hungry Some More.
Okay, next group.
Next group. Y'all are nowhere near soon.
Take a left, shift them, man.
Over here. Coming next.
Just beware of the photobomb.
Good stuff.
Get Rami, there you go.
Get him, Scott.
Get Rami Bridges.
All right, holding it right here. Wasn't smiling on that one. All right, we got free money. Give me that free money smile. One, two, three. One, two, three. Excellent. All right, squeeze in. Squeeze in, Dr. Griffin, please. All right. Everybody look in here.
Okay, boy. Great job, guys.
I'm gonna put an application card, photo guy. I'll have to prove it for that. It won't cost a lot. Small team.
Six feet to you.
Six feet to you, bro, and I'll just... I'll wear a little vest.
Special occasion, sporty.
You can drive a bus any time you want. I'll be the buzzer, bud. Do the buzzer guy.
No, you're not done.
All right, way to go, guys. Congratulations. Ask one, two, three. One, two, three.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Good job. That'd clear a room out there. That would clear a room. We're down.
Start getting baitings with public comment requests. I think that makes the rest of the presenters a little nervous that the excitement level can't be quite maintained, as we've just had now. So we have public comment is next. Do we have anyone who is wishing to make a public comment? The answer is no. So we will move on to the consent agenda. Have all board members had the opportunity to review the consent agenda? And if so, are there any questions, comments?
Make a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
Mr. Reese?
Second.
Second, by Mr. McLean. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The consent agenda is approved. Next is the report section, Board of Education Committee reports. Do we have any committees that wish to report out?
Mr. Chair, Facilities would like to report that we have a deposit on the old head start Ellendale Building Inn, and we're in our 10-day process of a overbid process, so hopefully, if nothing happens in a few days, Facilities can ask the board for a motion to sell the property. It's looking very good on the deposits, and we're on the timeline, so very happy to report that.
At this point, to accept the offer?
No. Won't need it till the upset bid is up.
Okay, very well.
So I'll come back with that as soon as needed.
Great job.
Wonderful.
Nice way to exit.
Yeah. Very, very thankful. This has been a very good process.
Great job, Scott. That's wonderful.
Very thankful.
And, Miss May Happy?
I have...
Oh, you have a name?
I'd have a committee report. We met for the Education Foundation, and I just wanted to let everybody know the Sports Hall of Fame Ceremony is November 25 at 6:00. We'll start in the cafeteria with hors d'oeuvres and then move into the auditorium for the ceremony. Tickets are $30. They can be purchased here at the Board of Education office. There is a link somewhere out there on social media that you can purchase them online, and so we appreciate your support.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other committee report updates? Very well, then we will move on to the next item, and that is Mr. Chris Brown.
I don't like public speaking. You're doing great. My name's Chris Brown. I'm the Assistant Chief of Central Alexander Power Department here in town. Back this summer, we applied for a grant for severe weather safety. We were awarded that grant, which was $5,000. Part of that money, we have... The county has a network of weather stations that provide real-time data to the Weather Service, but they've only had six that covers the county. We've added four more to that system to help. In addition to that grant, we have purchased every school in the county a new weather radio. So they're here in that room. I've got them marked. There's a few extras, so do what you need to with them.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Appreciate it, man.
Chris Brown, thank you so much for thinking of our school system. I reported what your offer was there to our principals, and they were really appreciative and ecstatic that I know we need those changes and updates. We hope we don't have to use them too much for severe weather.
Well, we wouldn't either, but...
We're grateful for your thinking of our school system and our staff and students. Thank you very much.
Well, we just thought it would be something I'd heard through some other schools that some weren't working, some weren't working, and we had extra funds left over, so...
Thank you.
That's what we whizzed with.
Thank you. We appreciate it, Chris.
So next we have financial report, Ms. Shannon Dennison.
Chairman, board members, Dr. Griffin, thank you for having me here this evening. It won't be nearly as entertaining as the awards, but that's amazing that you guys were able to give, or the foundation was able to give so many awards. I'm here to present the June 30, 2024, financial audit, and keeping in mind that all of this information that I go through goes back to a point in time last school year that ended in June 30, 2024. I am pleased to announce that the district has an unmodified opinion on the financial statement audit. That's the best opinion that you can receive, so congratulations on that longstanding opinion on your audit. That comes from both the Finance Department and throughout the district, and it's really a collaborative effort. We look at things both at the department level as well as finance level, so congratulations to staff, to you guys, for being supportive of that. I'm gonna go through a few highlights of the audit. Feel free to stop me, ask questions. Page numbers listed on here kind of highlight what's in your books. Page numbers will be listed at the bottom, and feel free to reach out if you have any questions during, after, or at a later time. Separate from the audit report is a required communication letter. This letter basically goes through if there's any significant estimates. The estimates that we have are the same estimates that are gonna be listed on any Board of Education in the state, so nothing that we're unsure of. Misstatements, we did not identify any, and we had no difficulties or disagreements with management. Everything we asked for, they promptly were able to provide and did a great... Were great to work with and had no disagreements. Your major funds, we looked at the general fund is gonna be where you're able to spend the bulk of your money. That's where your county funding goes to and where you're able to establish a fund balance, which is gonna be basically the district savings account. That's where you're able to put away money as funds increase or decrease with the state, as your ADM adjusts. It allows you to be able to continue some operations or... It allows you to be able to continue some operations or, like in the case of Esser Funding, where you have a major chunk of federal money going away, can give you a little bit of a safety net. So, looking at your general fund, last year you spent $809,000 out of your general fund savings account. You started the year with 1.9 million, ended with just under 1.1 million. So, you know, I had previously reached out, kind of keep being aware of the fact that you have a million dollars left in your savings account, and at the rate that you spent last year, can get through this year and just a little bit longer before it's completely depleted. So, just being aware of the need to kind of live within your means, right-size your budget. Your budget has decreased. Your, the Esser money has gone away. In fact, last year, you were able to spend, out of the federal Esser money, the district spent $3.7 million in addition to this $809,000 that you don't have available to you this year. So, just keeping in mind the importance, as your ADM decreases and the state adjusts your funding based upon ADM, sometimes those kids don't come in neat packages the way the state allot funding, and so it really straps you even harder as those are, have changes in ADM. So, just kind of stressing the importance of that with your general fund. Your capital outlay fund, you spent about $315,000, a lot of ongoing projects. Your capital outlay fund, again, this is cut off as June 30th, so there's a lot of stuff kind of ongoing in capital between one year and the next. You still have about $1.4 million in your capital outlay fund. And then your other special revenue fund, that's gonna be primarily grants that are, is going to be primarily restricted for specific purposes. Some of your EC Medicaid money, for example, is gonna be in your other special revenue fund. That has to be spent back on EC students. So, there are some funding in there. That's primarily all gonna be grants. You've got almost $2.5 million in there, saved a little bit more in that grant, but it's gonna be, in general, really restricted and not able to be used for the general needs necessarily of the district. Any questions on fund balance? This is going, this basically shows you don't have a lot of funds restricted outside of the general fund restrictions, and so there's not a lot of changes to those balances. Those fund balances are really pretty accurate to go off of. Budget versus actual, last year there was a small categorical overage in expenditures in system-wide support in the general fund, and what we would consider an immaterial amount overall, considering the total expenditures were well within budget. So, nothing to cause a finding or anything. Total expenditures, no more funds were spent than the board had allotted throughout the budget throughout the year, as well as those budget amendments. Child nutrition and your school food service fund, this is another fund that we're seeing across the state starting to decline in a lot of districts, especially more rural districts. It costs a lot more to feed as your schools are spread out, as well as smaller schools. You're having, you know, smaller-sized kitchen staff, but not being able to feed as many meals. From the child nutrition department, we really look at cash balances at the end of the year as opposed to fund balance because of some accounting rules. So, you started the year with $744,000, ended with $406,000, just spent about $337,000 of cash throughout the year. Again, something to be mindful of as you go forward in terms of trying to best as possible right-size that, which can be done in a variety of ways, but it's not always easy. And, again, in some smaller rural districts, it has been a challenge over years to be able to be, you know, I was in a small district that we had the same problem, and sometimes it's just very challenging. If your child nutrition department gets to where they're out of cash, the district is required to supplement that program and continue running that program out of local funds. So, keeping in mind that if this does, if the child nutrition department does get depleted, that there will be a need from a local standpoint to continue supplementing until that's able to ideally get right-sized and be able to sustain itself. Community schools, your after-school program gained cash. There's some COVID grants that are still kind of, the tail end of that came in, or was able to be relieved with the spending in the after-school programs. They have about $516,000 remaining in cash in the community schools program. Any questions before I go? Audit findings and question cost. We had no financial statement findings. Everything that we looked at looked excellent. Federal awards, there was about $11.5 million spent on federal awards. We did not identify any instances where any federal awards were misspent, according to documents. And state grants, there was approximately $41 million state funds spent, and did not identify any issues with how state funds were spent. So, you know, in total, between federal and state, we're looking at about $53 million of funds that were spent out of the district. And so, to have no issues with that is a real achievement, should be commended for properly spending funds. Kind of bringing that around full circle, your revenue over time has increased. A lot of that is going to be federal funds that have come in from COVID. Again, that's kind of going away. As state funds increase, typically so do teacher salaries and the expenditures that are mandated by the state. Retirement has increased. Those type of things are gonna really increase hand-in-hand, and that puts additional strain, as you guys have seen, on your local budget, because locally you have to keep up with those state mandated raises, that state mandated retirement increases. And so, really, it's the true story of inflation, that state covers a piece of it, but then there's the piece locally that has to also get covered. And, so what a dollar bought pre-COVID compared to what a dollar buys post-COVID is really being felt by the district. Again, COVID revenue in 2024, I mentioned, is just under $4 million. About $53,000 left that was allocated to a couple of little things at the end of the year, but really, for all intensive purposes, it was gone as of June 30th, just with a couple lingering things. Local fund balance over time, the capital is in black, the general is gold. You guys had gotten to, had been in a really good spot with fund balance. You see it had gone down pre-COVID. Then kind of COVID coming in helped a little bit with some of those extra funds and being able to shift. However, that has continued to decline, and again, you know, with those COVID funds going away as well. I know you guys have done, from what I've been told, the hard work has been done this year to try to be able to right-size that. So, I would say that is much needed and commend the work that has been done to be able to kind of get there and continue to evaluate and just make sure that you're living within the funds that you all have so that you don't end up in a position, you're out of that savings account, something that really needs to be done. That's all I have. I appreciate the opportunity to work with you all and appreciate all the work that everybody in the district has done and continues to do on an everyday basis. It's not an easy job to spend this money with all of the rules and regulations that get tied to every pot and piece of money. It can't always be spent in the way that you think or want to, so excellent job.
Any questions from the board? Comments?
I'll commit finance to say what you just said says a lot about our team, and I know they put a ton in it, so hats off to you guys.
Shannon, you and your team did an exceptional job. As we've struggled through the budget issues in the last 12 months, and the proof is now that the repeatability and confidence in the numbers you provide are exceptional, so thank you. It's your team. Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
So, next we have our Human Resources report. Dr. Chlor. Oh, no, do we have, on the agenda, we don't have a finance update on this, but would you like to give us one?
I've got a very short one, and we can move on to this year's budget. The state, since our budget was approved, the state public school fund increased by $268,589 as the CPI made additional allotments to the school system. Those allotments were in CTE, education modernization and support, principals' test results bonus, school connectivity, literacy intervention, and coding and mobile application. The state budget increased to $37,512,247, making the total budget $64,015,627.
Thank you for everything you do. I want to reiterate what Mr. Bowman said a minute ago. Thank you for what you and all your staff do.
Great. Thank you very much. So, next we have Human Resources. Dr. Chlor.
Hello, good evening. I try not to cough on everybody. It's. So, you've been given the personnel agenda in your packets, and hopefully had, can still look at that. Have to see if you have any questions. What is the pleasure of the board?
Do we have any questions from members of the board? Do we have a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Dagan Hart, a second by Mr. Bowman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion's approved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Chlor.
So, next is the superintendent's report from Dr. Bill Griffey.
Great, thank you. Thank you very much, Chairman Agüez, Vice Chair Reese, members of the board. Just a couple items for this evening. I'd like to recognize the fact that on October 22nd and 23rd, I was assisted by members of the school board, and we ran around to all of our schools and were able to listen to the school improvement plans, get updates from our principals and from students about the wonderful things that were taking place within those buildings. I think it was a positive experience for myself, and the board has complimented also on the wonderful things that our schools are doing, our faculty and staff. And, to me, the most impressive piece was the fact that our students led a lot of our groups, and they gave us information and were able to dictate and give information about their school and the pride that they had. So, hats off to you. It's a valuable experience for me, and I appreciate your support as a board for doing that. Second, just the fact that, as Shannon mentioned with the audit, and Sharon and Andrea and your team, I was able to go out and visit every school, speak with every faculty member in the district, talk to them about our budget, hopefully replicate a lot of the information that was just given in the audit, and talk about living within our means as we move forward. I think that was well-received by our faculty. I got a lot of feedback that they appreciated being honest and transparent about our budget needs and where we are, and then updating them and giving some information and knowledge about our budget. So, I enjoyed those visits, enjoyed that time with each of those faculty members and given the opportunity to talk and ask and answer questions about our budget process. Last thing is just some things that have been going on, and these are purposeful. I was honored by Alexandria Central High School's cafeteria ladies and child nutrition, and I got to be a cafeteria person one afternoon, and I thoroughly enjoyed it. But I need people to understand that these folks work extremely hard. They have an incredible role in our school system. They're coveted by our students and do a fabulous job. So, hats off to our child nutrition department in hosting me and allowing me to be part of what they do every day. We've been in and out, me and my staff, of different events, from sporting events. Dr. Bowles and Dr. Dalrevis hosted a family night, a family academy, did a great job of trying to expose our parents to the wonderful things that are going on with curriculum within our district. We had a basketball game with our Cougar Connect classes at Alexandria Central High School. It was put on by Coach Cam Gant. And if you ever get an opportunity, when they have those in the future, it's a wonderful experience to see that our students are so welcoming of their peers and supportive of their peers, and it's just a day of celebration. And not only was the basketball game a success, but the halftime show was amazing as well. So, just hats off to the leadership that goes on there at our high school and recognizing our students and the fact that our student body is just welcoming to each of their peers. So, I certainly appreciate that. And lastly, on this part of things, our baby Cougars visited from Alexandria Central High School for Halloween. We were able to dress up and laugh at each other for one afternoon, but more importantly, just recognize and celebrate those students and allowing them to come over to the central office and visit with us a little bit. And then finally, once again, I just want to say hats off to Bridgette Ryan, Scott Bowman, and Rami Robinson for your service. Words really can't express to you guys how grateful we are for everything that you've done and that you've given of your time, and we just, we celebrate you tonight. So, thank you very much. And then lastly, just some upcoming dates that we have, November 25th, Sports Hall of Fame, and November 27th through 29th, there'll be no school for our Thanksgiving holiday. So, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. So, now we enter item number four on the agenda, our unfinished business, proposed Board of Education policy revisions, second reading. Ms. Mahaffey.
We have one policy up for second reading tonight, assignments, reassignments, and transfers. This was presented last month. I've had no questions or comments concerning this policy, and would like to ask for approval on second reading.
Do we have a motion by the board to approve Policy 7440, Assignments, Reassignments, and Transfers?
I'll make the motion to approve Policy 7440 as presented.
Second.
By Ms. Ryan, seconded by Mr. Robinson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion's approved. Policy's approved. So, now we go into new businesses, proposed Board of Education, minor policy change, first reading, Ms. Mahaffey.
Okay, we have nine policies that have minor changes. These are generally what happens in these policies is it is a citation to the law or maybe a name of a governing body has changed. So, those are what involved in these nine policies. Since these are minor changes, I would like to ask for approval on first reading.
Any questions or comments from members of the board? Do we have a motion to approve?
Move to approve. All nine. Second.
So, we have a motion by Mr. Bowman, second by Mr. McLean. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion approved. Policy approved.
A last policy is up for first reading, and so it is Policy 1310, Parent Involvement. I will let this stand for a month and see if we have any suggestions or changes. Thank you all very much.
That's excellent. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
So, that concludes the open session agenda that we have. We will enter into closed session once approved to do some of the work and return upon the decisions made in closed session shortly thereafter. So, do we have a motion to adjourn open session and enter into closed session?
So may.
Second.
By Ryan, seconded by Mr. McLean. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All opposed?